Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. It's six o'clock PM. Your Tuesday, March 15th, 2022 Pontiac City Council meeting is hereby called to order. Councilman Parker, could you please give this evening's invocation?
Thank you, President McGinnis. To all the members of the city of Pontiac, let us pray. Hesitate, God our Father, we come this day first giving you thanks. For certainly you have been gracious, merciful, kind, loving, patient, and understanding with each and every one of us. Lord, we thank you for our mayor, our council, and all the leaders at every level in our city. In the name of Jesus now, Lord God, we pray that you would give them grace to bring truth, justice, and stability not only to our city but to our entire region. Give them power to do what is right and to rule in fairness to the level that our community becomes known for its integrity and its justice. We ask, Lord God, that you would just continue to watch over each and every person that is under the sound of my weak voice. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen? Amen and amen.
Thank you. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
If you could please remain standing, we'll have a moment of silence. Want to invoke the names of those that we know have been recent losses for our community. Charlotte Ann Brown, Harold Dyer, Terrence Flowers, Joseph Gonzalez, Terrell Morgan, Duchan Moore, Ann Penn, Nancy Perkins, Kevin Thompson, Yvonne Washington, and Alonzo Cash, who in the past has worked for the city with elections, and we'll be honoring him next week with a tribute for his service in his life to the city of Pontiac. Please join us in a moment of silence remembering those that we have named and those that are in your neighborhoods and in your lives that we've lost. Thank you.
Carrington.
Present.
Goodman.
Here.
James.
Here.
McGinnis.
Present.
Nicholson.
Here.
Parker.
Here.
Rutherford.
Mr. President, you have a quorum. Thank you. Could I please, quorum having been established, can I please have a motion to excuse Council on Rutherford for personal reasons?
So moved.
Second.
Hearing no discussion on that motion, roll call on authorization to excuse Council on Melanie Rutherford for personal reasons. Clerk Doyle.
Goodman.
Yes.
James.
Yes.
McGinnis.
Yes.
Nicholson.
Yes.
Parker.
Yes.
Carrington.
Yes.
Six J's, no N's.
That motion carries. Is there a motion to approve this evening's agenda?
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved by Councilman Nicholson, seconded by Councilman Goodman, so we have the motion before us. Are there any amendments, changes, questions for this evening's agenda? Hearing no further discussion, roll call on approval of the agenda. Clerk Doyle.
James.
Yes.
McGinnis.
Yes.
Nicholson.
Yes.
Parker.
Yes.
Carrington.
Yes.
Goodman.
Yes.
Six J's, no N's.
That motion carries. Is there a motion to approve this evening's consent agenda?
So moved.
It's been moved by Councilman Goodman, seconded by Councilman Nicholson. Now a debatable motion, we move into roll call vote. It has four items in the consent agenda, the minutes from last week's council meeting and then three subcommittee meeting minutes. On adoption of the, an approval of the consent agenda, roll call Clerk Doyle.
McGinnis.
Yes.
Nicholson.
Yes.
Parker.
Yes.
Carrington.
Yes.
Goodman.
Yes.
James.
Yes.
Six J's, no N's.
That motion carries. We're now at recognition of elected officials. Are there any elected officials this evening that wish to be recognized and have the floor? All right, we're now at Agenda Address. Two-minute opportunity to speak to items on the agenda this evening before the council dives in and considers them further. President Pro Tem Carrington, you have the floor.
Yes, thank you, President McGinnis. First, Mr. Chuck Johnson.
Thank you very much and good evening. On the agenda number two, I'm kind of don't understand, is this a resolution to bring forward this dollar amount for a person that's going to be selected at a later date? Or is this a dollar amount for a person that's going, that's in the system, is going to be selected for this spot? It's not very clear, so I can't really make my point here. So, in other words, a resolution to approve $72,000. Is that for existing superintendent or someone we're going to be looking forward to putting into that spot at a later date and time? Okay, so with that, has anyone been selected for that spot? Nobody's been selected. Okay, well, very good. That kind of helps me out. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Bill Maxey, Agenda Address.
Good evening. I pose the same question as Mr. Johnson. Is it the existing, and I was looking down, I was reading my notes, is that resolution for existing or is that a resolution for still interviewing candidates for that position? And whoever gets that position, that's the amount of salary we are recommending to receive? And I didn't hear that. Maybe I need to hear again. Existing or new applicants coming in to interview?
When we get to that agenda item, we'll make sure that the administration answers those questions.
I didn't hear you.
When we get to that item on the agenda, we'll make certain that the administration offers that update and answers those questions.
Well, yes, that, that readily has to be addressed. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Council Emeritus, Ms. Gloria Miller.
Good evening, everyone. The number, I got two I want to address. The number five, the resolution to approve the fiscal year 2021 for the mayor's office in regards to the public event specialist. First of all, who is that person and what would their responsibility be? And actually, I, you know, it's pertaining to the agenda, this is a little strange format the way you guys do this because you already know the answers, and when we do ask you the questions up here during the general review, you still vote on them before you get the public time to, to digest it and see what's going on. So just, just FYI, where it is that you guys, you do everything the same night, you don't get, you're not giving the public any input in it. That's why I'm down here. I've been out of town, I come down for some people to mention some things tonight. Number seven, the youth recreation. That's youth millage money. We want to know, and when I say me, it's more than me, this person that's making this kind of money, you know that is millage money. And as we well know from previous meetings when I was here months ago, that the prior administration spent a lot of it being over at the center that they were at. So where are we getting the $75,000 or is that's going to be next fiscal year for this, for item number seven? And who is the person? Thank you.
All right, thank you. Mr. Quincy Stewart.
This is in regard to number two as well. I think Eric Brim is a really cool guy. I mean, I think that he's been around a long time, he knows what he's doing, he's been in this town a long time, he knows how to operate the equipment, he knows what's going on there. I just am going to put his name in the hat, whether you've asked him or not, I just thought I'd put his name in there because Eric Brim seems to be the most qualified person, and so I'm just throwing his name in there for number two.
All right, thank you, sir. President McGinnis, that concludes our Agenda Address.
All right, we are now resolutions. Is there a motion to adopt the resolution to authorize the Department of Public Works to apply for the Michigan Department of Transportation Local Bridge Program Funds for Expansion Joint Replacement and Capital Preventive Maintenance of Martin Luther King Jr. Boulevard over the Grand Trunk Western Railroad Bridge, Martin Luther King Jr. Boulevard over the Clinton River Bridge, and Paddock Street over the Clinton River Bridge for fiscal year 2025?
So moved.
Support. It's been moved by Goodman, seconded by Carrington, so we now have that motion before us. We give the floor to the mayor administration for context.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd invite Mr. Abdul Siddiqui, the city engineer, to the podium to talk about the details about these bridge product, projects and the application for grant funding from the state.
Thank you, Mayor. So the MDOT has opened up applications for the fiscal year 2025 local bridge program funding. You are familiar with the program. You recently approved the University and Kennedy Road Bridges. So it's the same program, 95% federal funding, 5% city match unless we choose to match more. Our applications would be more competitive if we choose to match, if we choose to put in a greater match, which I usually don't opt for. So in this case, we're, so typically, these sort of applications don't require council approval except for the local bridge program. So that's why they're requesting us, the local bridge program requires that council pass a resolution approving the applications. And so these are the three bridges that we've identified through our bridge inspections is the MLK Junior Boulevard over Grand Trunk Western Railroad, Expansion Joint Replacement and Capital Preventive Maintenance, MLK Junior Boulevard over Clinton River, same thing, Expansion Joint Replacement and Capital Preventive Maintenance, and Paddock Street over Clinton River, Capital Preventive Maintenance, which means like concrete patching on the deck and other miscellaneous treatments.
Any questions or comments from council? Councilwoman James.
Yes, I'd like to know if any other ones were considered, particularly on Telegraph, the bridge there that is adjacent to the flea market on Telegraph and Dixie Highway. Do you know if that one?
So Telegraph is, is an MDOT road.
It's an MDOT road?
Right.
Okay, so it wouldn't qualify?
It wouldn't qualify.
Okay.
Others that wish to have the floor? What's the deadline for this application?
It's, I believe it's either the end of the month or April 4th, something, basically at the end of the month.
Okay. And is this sort of identified in terms of sort of a scale of, of concern? These are the three that are the most priorities for local bridges that we have that haven't otherwise been addressed.
Right, so we have 15 bridges local. The one in the worst condition is Orchard Lake over Clinton River. So we, that's already, that's already received funding through this program, and that will be going through construction next, next summer. And so, so that's the worst, the rest are actually in fair condition or good condition. So these are three that were identified that are in fair condition, and so we're just, you know, the money's out there, so we should apply and, you know, extend the life on the bridges as much as possible.
The Orchard, to follow up the Orchard Lake Road Bridge over the Clinton River that you mentioned, is that going to be a full replacement or is it similarly going to be sort of section patch or section?
No, so it's a replacement of the superstructure, so the, the deck is being replaced completely rather than patching and stuff. So it's, it's a replacement but not a full replacement of the structure itself. It's a replacement of a certain part of the structure.
Thank you. Others that wish to have the floor? So a point was made during Agenda Address, which was a very fair question in terms of the, the time in which public is able to consider, and that's true for council as well. So when we have an item that we first hear, it's discussion, although if everyone feels as though it's, it's fully clear and, and all questions have been answered and there isn't a need for further debate, that it can be voted on that night or it can be postponed for one week to allow two weeks to digest it, debate it, allow for as much input from all interested parties as possible. This is our first evening hearing it. There is some time sensitivity in terms of the application, but not like it's due tomorrow at midnight. So want to hear where my colleagues are at. Would you like us to deliberate on this further for one week or would you, and if that's the case, motion to postpone for one week? Otherwise, we'll proceed into voting now if you feel as though it's straightforward and we have all the information and concerns have been addressed. Yes, Councilwoman James.
I think it's straightforward that we certainly want to be able to utilize MDOT's money rather than our own. So unless there are additions or unless there's a possibility that these may change, there's no reason why we shouldn't vote tonight.
Very good. Hearing no further discussion on that and there being no motion to postpone, we now move into the voting for this, adoption of this resolution. Roll call Clerk Doyle.
Nicholson.
Yes.
Parker.
Yes.
Carrington.
Yes.
Goodman.
Yes.
James.
Yes.
McGinnis.
Yes.
Six J's, no N's.
That motion carries. Is there a motion to adopt the resolution to approve for fiscal year 2122 the position of DPW superintendent with an annual salary of $72,000?
So moved.
Support. It's been moved by Councilman Goodman, seconded by President Pro Tem Carrington. That motion before us. We now give the floor to the mayor administration for some backstory.
Thank you, President McGinnis. This is a position that has been in place in the past in the city. It was never approved as part of the current fiscal year's budget. We had at the city last year both a person in the position of DPW director and a person in the position of deputy DPW director. When we promoted the then DPW deputy director, Al Cooley, to the position of interim DPW director, we now have a vacancy in the deputy DPW director position. Rather than hiring somebody into that deputy DPW director position at a higher salary, we determined that it was more financially prudent to divert some of that salary for the deputy DPW director into the position of superintendent, which was not budgeted for. The interim DPW director clearly needs some assistance, and so we want there to be a elevated position there besides the interim DPW director, but it's much cheaper for us to allocate some funds into the interim, excuse me, into the DPW superintendent position rather than hiring somebody into the higher paying deputy DPW director position. So that's why we're coming with this proposal to allocate funds to the DPW superintendent position at the annual rate of $72,000. That position had been filled a couple years ago at that salary. We're not increasing the salary beyond what it was a couple of years ago. And to answer some of the questions that were posed during public comment, we have not yet selected anybody for this position. This is going to be posted in the usual course of business for the position being filled. But again, this is a much more financially prudent way to move forward by allocating the lesser amount of $72,000 per year for this position as opposed to hiring somebody into the higher paying deputy DPW director position. And that's why we're coming forward with this proposal.
Those that wish to discuss, Councilman Parker, then Goodman?
Yeah, thank you, Brother President. My question is, are we then eliminating the director, the deputy director position? Or is the anticipation that we will fill both of those positions with the coming budget?
Well, we're certainly not going to be filling the deputy DPW director position this current fiscal year. We may want to fund that position for the coming fiscal year in the anticipation of filling that position in the coming fiscal year, which starts July 1st, but we haven't made that determination yet. So our budget proposal will propose funding whatever positions we intend to fill the coming fiscal year starting July 1st, but we haven't made a decision yet as to whether we're going to propose funding both the deputy DPW director position and the DPW superintendent position or not. That'll be reflected in our budget proposal.
And next, is the $72,000 the aggregate salary for the remainder of this fiscal year or would that be the annual salary as it is funded for next year?
That would be the annual salary, meaning the salary on a 12-month basis. So for the remainder of this fiscal year, which is just the months of April, May, June, and, and that's it, it would be, you know, roughly a third of that amount.
Okay, thank you, sir. Councilman Goodman.
So the question I'd ask then is, like, what is the difference in terms of responsibility and job, well, job requirements between the superintendent and deputy director for us to be funding the, the lesser of the two?
I'm going to allow the, the deputy mayor to get into those details, but in a nutshell, the superintendent is really responsible to coordinating and supervising very day-to-day functions in terms of scheduling personnel and assigning them to specific tasks and supervising them, hence the name superintendent, supervising them in terms of the specific minutia of what they're doing, whereas the deputy director is a little bit higher level in terms of helping the DPW director with broader policy thinking and, and broader policy decision-making. But Deputy Mayor?
So, thank you, Mayor. The, the mayor's description is spot on. The deputy director is literally the stand-in for the director, so the deputy director is more involved in tending to the forest, whereas the superintendent is dealing with the day-to-day tactical operations, and that is the, that is the area that needs help right now. And so that is why the current interim director has actually asked not to fill the deputy director position but to please fill the superintendent position because he needs help tending to the trees, not the forest.
All right, that was it. Councilman Nicholson?
I'm looking further in the agenda, item number four, I want to verify, number four is the reaction to our, some of our personnel actions, is that correct? Is this the, the secondary funding result of us funding additional positions? I see, I always wonder when we're saying yes to a position and funding it, what's going on in the budget and, with the budget in the, in the benefits line items? Looks like this one does increase, I'm sorry, number three, does increase medical insurance and, and looks like secondary expenses related to additional staff. Is that, am I right or is there just additional dollars left in those based on open positions in those, in those budget lines? Do you want me to ask?
No, no, no. Item, item number three is for a diff, for different.
Okay, so in this agenda today, we're approving, potentially approving two positions, right? Is there, is there, are the, there's always a percentage, right?
Yes.
Of administrative, a percentage that comes with filling a new position. What, based on the fact that there was a different position funded, we're, it's apple, I mean, it's, we're, we're trading hands, right? There's not, are we, are we negligible in the benefits line items?
So that would be?
Yeah, I, I can answer that a little bit here. So, and I say I can answer that because Deputy Mayor, you were out on Friday when this question arose. We had originally drafted a proposed notice of budget amendment to be published for the position of DPW superintendent, and Clerk Garland told us that we did not need that notice of proposed budget amendment because the DPW deputy director was already funded. And so we followed Clerk Garland's advice about what was needed for this agenda. So if you want additional information or an additional resolution, we're happy to do that. We had proposed that and had prepared that on Friday, but Clerk Garland indicated that wasn't necessary. We do have that information, I believe, from Mr. Darren Carrington's work on preparing that resolution, and we can provide that.
Yeah, I, I think I, I'm mostly just curious related to them because we approved two other positions meeting, last meeting or meeting before. Now, this one, I know one was in the budget, now we're replacing one, so this one is likely fair, but as we continue, I just want that to be thought of as, as we're looking at the salary number only when we're making these approvals. I think there's also, you know, I mean, in some cases, it's, you know, percent of administrative cost is 33% of salary.
So Councilman, understanding your question, I thought you were asking about the additional resolutions. Understanding your question, you, you are correct that the, the benefit line item would be negligible in difference, and in fact, the benefits would be lesser for the superintendent than they would be.
We're still, we're still negative on FTE from budget. Is, so, okay, thank you.
And, and the reason for that, incidentally, is that the healthcare benefits are about the same, obviously, but when it comes to the FICA taxes, for example, because those are a percentage of salary, that's actually less than the corresponding FICA tax item for the deputy DPW director.
Yeah.
And any 401K defined contribution benefit plans are also defined as a percentage of salary, so those would actually be less.
Yeah, I'm square on this position alone, I'm just thinking about the general thought process of council moving forward when we approve positions to think about the corresponding administrative cost.
Yeah, and, and we do, and we had a resolution prepared to go along those lines. We relied on, on your clerk to direct us as to what resolutions.
Yeah, I thi, I think that decision was fine. I just want us to, each council person to have that in mind, that we're not just approving $72,000, especially if it's a new position that's above or beyond. I know we'll eventually get there once we get out of, you know, the, the unfilled FTEs that we've had from previous months.
Yep, understood.
Thank you.
Others that wish to have the floor? Are there any motions to postpone? Hearing no further discussion, speakers list exhausted and no further motions, we now move in to roll call vote on the adoption of a resolution to approve for fiscal year 2122 the position of DPW superintendent with an annual salary of $72,000. Roll call Clerk Doyle.
Parker.
Yes.
Carrington.
Yes.
Goodman.
Yes.
James.
Yes.
McGinnis.
Yes.
Nicholson.
Yes.
Six J's, no N's.
Thank you. That motion carries. Is there a motion to adopt the resolution to approve a budget amendment for fiscal year 2122 to transfer $37,000 from general fund balance GL account 101-000-309.000 to the following general fund, department 171, mayor GL accounts 101-171-702.000, salaries and wages $33,000, 101-171-715.000, FICA city contribution $2,000, 101-171-716.000, medical insurance $2,000. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second? It's been moved by Councilman Goodman, seconded by Councilman Nicholson to adopt that resolution that was just identified. So that's what's before us. This came to city council two weeks ago when we had a notice to publish that budget amendment, so since the adequate time to satisfy state law and ordinance and all that good stuff has passed, it is now before us again. Want to give the floor to mayor and administration for context.
Well, you summed it all up, Mr. President. The council approved the creation of these two positions. The council also voted a couple weeks ago to publish a notice of a budget amendment to allow for the funding of these two positions. The required amount of time has passed, and this is a resolution to actually enact that budget amendment to fund these two positions. There is one thing that I want to note, there's, there's actually an error in this resolution, which is the council amended the title of one of the positions to change it from constituent services manager to resident services manager. I believe that was the change that council decided upon, if I'm not mistaken. And if that's the case, the resolution before us should be similarly amended to change the title of the position from constituent services manager to resident services manager. Perhaps it was community services manager, I'm not sure, but in any event, I know that it's not constituent services manager. So please amend this resolution in accordance with the title that council gave the position.
The, the thrust of the position, the purpose of the position is all noble, so we welcome that. What was agreed upon is What was agreed upon is the title was community concerns manager. So is there a motion to amend the resolution to change in the third whereas to strike constituent services manager instead read community concerns manager?
So moved.
I second.
Okay, it's been moved by Goodman, seconded by James, so now we have the amendment before us. Any further discussion on that name tweak to reflect the previous sentiment of the council?
Can, can someone just give me their thought process on that title? I'm having trouble with it, just based on what I understood, the person to be doing is, is more connecting residents when they're in the building, right? I mean, is this, help, help me again.
Sure, I welcome.
Get comfortable with that.
We can go in a lot of different directions. If we just say resident, you know, resident concerns or resident services, there are, in all reality, a lot of visitors to city hall who are property owners or, or, you know, have a business with the city that aren't necessarily residents, and they're also going to be benefiting from this additional service. And we want it to be very clear on what the purpose is, you know, because as we build out the operations of city government, there will be a lot of different titles. It's good to have the title convey inherently what it does, so that's where I recall the conversation.
From an FSLA perspective, the title manager is where I'm having the most problem. Is this person going to be supervising other individuals? Are they managing a very large or robust process? I mean, manager evokes that this is a salaried role with people reporting to them, managing a larger, robust process. So I think maybe not manager unless that's the case. I think community concerns or resident, I think all of that prior to that makes a lot of sense, but I think the manager title, I think, will mess with your org chart a bit, especially if this is a line-level person unless they're managing other individuals. Supervisors, right, managers.
Well, that's, that's a very fair point, and we can certainly change the title to community concerns specialist if that would alleviate that concern.
Yeah, I think, I think, yeah, either, because that, yeah, I think a specialist would, would make more sense. I just think, as we're continuing, especially conversations with building org charts and wanting to make sure that you have the ability to provide infrastructure for supervisors and managers, I think that might confuse the process if this person's not within a managerial structure.
That's a really good point, and we're fine with changing the title to specialist instead of manager.
Well, if you'd like, withdraw that amendment. Do you withdraw your second?
Yes.
And now, so are you making an amendment to strike that language to read community concerns specialist instead? Anyone want to make that?
I would like to make that.
Okay. Is there a second? So it's been moved by Nicholson, seconded by Goodman, that in the third whereas, it would read, whereas the positions of executive offices, executive office coordinator, and community concerns specialist were not included in the original budget.
And that it's...
And then it would say it in a fifth whereas as well to reflect that as well.
And, and as I said, I, I think that makes good sense. In light of the fact that the council previously approved the creation of the position with the title community concerns manager, I welcome whatever process council deems appropriate to modify the previous resolution passed, creating the position under the title of community concerns manager, so that we can modify that accordingly to make it community concerns specialist.
Understood. Any further discussion on this amendment? The amendment of updating the, the title, hearing no further discussion. Roll call on the amendment, clerk Doyle.
Goodman?
Yes.
James?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Nicholson?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Harrington?
Yes.
Six shays, no nays.
That motion carries. We're now back to the main motion, the resolution as amended. Any discussion, any further discussion? Councilwoman James?
Is, is the clerk Doyle going to take care of that, that original resolution that went in?
I've made a note, we may, for in the following week, may just have a very simple resolution, just updating and aligning, you know, we might do a quick resolution that adopts it to reflect that. But I'll consult with the administration and clerk to see what procedurally might be the tidiest way forward. So we have the main motion as amended. Any further discussion? So what we're doing essentially is, is considering the budget amendment for the positions that have been created to make city hall work more effectively for residents and visitors and get their concerns through the channels towards a solution and to coordinate the many activities that the mayor's office needs to contend with in serving the community. Any further discussion? With that, we're moving now into, speakers list exhausted, on adoption of the resolution. Roll call, clerk Doyle.
Harrington?
Yes.
Goodman?
Yes.
James?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Nicholson?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Six shays, no nays.
Motion carries. Is there a motion to adopt a resolution to authorize the city clerk to publish a notice of a proposed budget amendment for fiscal year twenty-one, twenty-two, transferring fifteen thousand, two hundred and fifty dollars out of the general fund, fund balance GL account one zero one, zero zero zero, three nine zero point zero zero zero, and twelve thousand, five hundred dollars is transferred to the general fund GL account one zero one, one seven one, seven oh two point zero zero zero, salaries and wages, and one thousand, two hundred and fifty dollars is transferred to GL account one zero one, one seven one, seven one five point zero zero zero, FICA, and one thousand, five hundred dollars to GL account one zero one, one seven one, seven one six point zero zero zero, medical insurance. This but proposed budget amendment is to fund the public relations event specialist position in the mayor's office. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second? So what this does is, is authorizes the clerk to publish that notice, it doesn't necessarily adopt that budget amendment. So that's the motion before us. Is there any, oh, want to give the floor to mayor and administration for rationale?
Yeah, the, the whole purpose of this position is that currently, we don't have anybody at city hall that is doing any of these items or is at least specifically charged with doing any of these items. And, and these items include interacting with the media, sending out press releases on behalf of city council and the mayor, taking phone calls from the media on behalf of the mayor or city council, doing anything to promote the city or to get the word out about city events, doing anything to make sure that we're properly branding the city, or doing anything to help coordinate or organize or facilitate events in the city. One of our administration's priorities, and I, I know this is a priority for city council as well, is to hold more signature events, not just in downtown Pontiac, which is important, but also in neighborhoods throughout the city. Currently, there's nobody at city hall charged with helping make that happen. The city is looking at analyzing and assessing and improving the branding for the city, meaning logo, city motto, city slogan, and there's a city council committee that has begun that work, but there's nobody at city hall to help with that work, who's specifically charged to help with that work, and then charged with actually utilizing the logo, or the motto, or the slogan, and implementing it and getting word out about that. And then, as I said earlier, there's nobody here who's charged with actually interacting or interfacing with the media. It's perhaps the only city I know of in, in Oakland County that doesn't have somebody charged with that responsibility. My understanding is, based on when I, when I got into office in January and I asked, hey, whose responsibility is it to respond to inquiries from the press or send out press releases? People said, well, the previous administration didn't have anybody doing that because the previous mayor insisted on handling all press inquiries herself directly. And so we want to make sure that we have a person charged with doing these important tasks on behalf of the city, and we've rolled these functions into one position in order to minimize the cost and expense to the city of doing these functions, and the functions are really interrelated in many respects. We think that a salary of fifty thousand dollars is a modest, reasonable cost and salary for somebody who is charged with all of these essential functions. And as the city council president has already done, I do want to emphasize that, as has been city council and the mayor's practice, we try to bring these things for at least one sounding before city council, if not more than one, before they're voted on. So this certainly gives notice of a proposed budget amendment, but that budget amendment will not be approved until some future meeting, specifically in order to give city council and the public more than one opportunity to weigh in on these discussion items before they're actually voted on.
Those that wish to have the floor? Hearing, no further discussion. We move into speakers list exhausted. We move into roll call voting on adoption of the resolution to authorize the city clerk to publish the notice of the proposed budget amendment. Roll call, clerk Doyle.
James?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Nicholson?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Harrington?
Yes.
Goodman?
Yes.
Six shays, no nays.
Thank you. That motion carries. Is there a motion to adopt the resolution to approve a new position for fiscal year two thousand, twenty-one, twenty-two, within the mayor's office, public relations, event specialist, and annual salary of fifty thousand dollars?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved by Parker, seconded by James. That motion is before us. Mayor and administration has just spoken to it broadly, but is there anything further you'd like to elaborate on?
Nothing, no. I, I think I spoke to it on the previous agenda. Thanks.
Any discussion at this time before we postpone? Councilman Nicholson?
Have we done any research as to what the housing commission is paying their person in this role? I know they have an individual that's in a very similar capacity.
They do, and I don't know what she's being compensated. It's a good question.
Yeah, I, I haven't seen any, or our subcommittee hasn't seen any data related to that salary. It seems quite low to me, especially knowing what people are coming out of, some of those media outlets making, but that's just a speculative thought. I, I'd like to see that information. I think our subcommittee would like...
My, my inclination is the same as yours, which is why I said it's a quite modest salary.
Yeah.
And, and certainly, if city council believes that we need to increase that to attract quality candidates, we're open to that. In the meantime, we can certainly spend the next few days looking at what comparable positions pay, including looking at what the housing commission pays for its position as well as, as well as what other municipalities pay for similar positions. I, I suspect, actually, that some municipalities are going to have more than one position for all of these tasks as opposed to rolling them all into one position.
Right.
Which would only further emphasize your underlying point, councilman.
Others that wish to have the floor? Councilwoman James?
Well, I think it is an important position. It's one that, a city that really wants to change its image and really wants to move forward, if they're serious about it, then they would need to have someone in this kind of a role. And I think in terms of, Brett, your comment, my understanding is that we're looking at salary throughout the, throughout the city in terms of what, you know, being competitive with salaries, because we know that if we're not, then we're not going to get the best people into these positions. So this would be no different than all of the other positions. At some point, we've got to look at competitiveness and is that salary a competitive salary enough that it would attract the kind of employees that we would like to hire? So if, if fifty thousand doesn't do it, then hopefully that the process that we're starting of looking at salaries will identify that and make corrections in that.
Councilman Goodman?
And I mean, just, just in relation to the things that council has envisioned for the same, like, to accomplish on that front, I also agree with councilman Nicholson that the position should be paid a little bit higher. Also, just to realize the, the importance of that position in regards to previous city actions before this current administration, having someone who does this as a job prevents people from sending out press releases calling opponents carpetbaggers on official city letter heads. So it's extremely important.
Oh, I forgot about that.
Yeah, it was a lovely thing that happened during the election. But it, the, this, this role is extremely important, as you alluded to, because it's a, it's a common role in different cities, and just from the perspective of someone who likes checks and balances, it does offer a check and a balance between the administration for whatever capacity and the outward-facing world. So I think it's a very important role that should be compensated, so.
President Protem Carrington?
Well, thank you, President McGinnis. I take a, probably a little different spin than most of my council. I really would like to see the audit first before we start increasing too many salaries and then having to go backwards in making sure that we meet and meet our budget objectives. I definitely understand it's just a position that's very important. I can agree with the modest fifty thousand, but I definitely would like to see the administration get that audit done as we move to adjusting some of these salaries to, to higher wages.
Any further discussion? Councilman Nicholson?
I think, you know, it's, it's nice that these public positions, right, we can get a lot of very quick data if we pick up the phone. I'm happy to help in, in our subcommittee and get some data and some numbers over. So if there's no other one, anyone else that would like to make a moment, I'd like to make a motion to propose, or to...
Postpone.
Postpone this item for at least one week, so we can grab some more information and get some better answers about that number.
There's been a, a motion to postpone for one week. Is there a second?
Support.
It's been moved by Nicholson, seconded by Goodman, that we postpone for one week. Any discussion on that postponement motion? Mayor Grimal?
I, I support postponing it so we can get some additional information, and thank you, councilman Nicholson, for your offer to help get some of that information. We may take you up on that. And then, in regard to President Protem Carrington's comment, I do just want to note that we will be bringing forward next week, selection and contract of the auditor for approval before council, and it will take some time for that audit to be completed, as you might expect. My understanding is that the proposed firm that we'll be bringing before council on Tuesday, which is in line with what we've discussed in the past, that contract that we'll be proposing for approval will call for the completion of the forensic audit by the end of July, just as a FYI.
Any further discussion? The motion before us is postponement for one week. Roll call, clerk Doyle.
Nicholson?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Harrington?
Uh, yes.
Goodman?
Yes.
James?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Six shays, no nays.
That motion carries. Is there a motion to adopt the resolution to approve zoning map amendment, ZMA twenty-two dash zero one, at seven eighty-eight East Walton Boulevard, parcel identification number sixty-four, fourteen, sixteen, two two six, zero one five, from R3 multiple-family dwelling to C3 corridor commercial zoning district? Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Is there a support?
I support.
Moved by Goodman, seconded by James. That motion is before us. We give the floor to mayor and administration for context.
I defer to Mr. Vern Gustafson to walk through this agenda item.
All right. Good evening, council president, city council, mayor, deputy mayor. Before you is a zoning map amendment, or what we call a rezoning here in the city. And let me just give you some context. This is similar to a project that I presented to you back in mid-January. So we follow the zoning ordinance, which is in section six point eight oh two, where the applicant, an application or applicant comes in with an application for a zoning map amendment to change the classification of that zoning district. We do a technical review. We put it, we then put it on to an agenda for planning commission to review. At the same time, before that planning commission, we definitely publish a notice in the paper for a public...
Mr. Gustafson?
Yes.
You're doing great, but we're gonna give a few second pause while the livestream comes back on, so that way...
I just got a text that it's back.
Oh, there you go. What a brief recess.
Yeah.
Please continue. I apologize for the interruption, but for those at home, we're talking zoning map amendment. Mr. Gustafson has the floor.
Okay, so it allowed us to, within that period of time, we can publish it as, as required by state law and also our zoning ordinance, and also notify residents within three hundred feet before that planning commission. So back at the beginning of March, or March second, I believe, which is our planning commission meeting, our regularly scheduled planning commission, with the newly appointed and reappointed commission, that we're fully engaged with seven people back on the commission, which is great news. Thank you, mayor and council, for that. We are... We are, we held the public hearing. There was no public comment. And so what we, as working with the applicant, Storage One, they've been there for a number of years on the south side of East Walton, between Joslin and Gettings. And through the years, what we found was, going back in history, back in the early 2000s, they kept on getting site plan approval and then going to ZBA for a use variance. So what we suggested, and the applicant agreed, their consultant team is here if you have any particular questions for them, agreed that to be better compliance with their ordinance, it was better to rezone from R3 multiple-family dwelling to C3 corridor commercial. So with that being said, and this was all presented, this area in red represents a little context of the site, south of South Boulevard, south of Huron, or excuse me, Walton Boulevard. You can see the existing number of existing self-storage or what we call mini warehousing that's existing. So the applicant is looking to expand the continuation of that development on that existing site. What's important, aside from the fact of what we're taking a look at as views along Walton Boulevard, both east and westbound, as relates to the current condition of the site, we also have to take very, we take very closely, or close attention to our master plan and existing ordinance. When we start looking at R3 multiple-family dwelling, it really is intended to be, the intent of that district is really regards to creating sustainable residential development and environments. So you could have multiple family, you could have two-family, you could actually have single-family in an R3 zoning district with scattered type of services and community businesses that support that neighborhood. When we start taking a look at the proposed zoning classification, that being C3 corridor commercial, it's definitely mixed use. There is residential as classification, there's also office, business services, and retail businesses, which are what we do see along Walton Boulevard. So it made much more sense from that perspective. I think what's most important is, is that according to our master plan done in 2014, we take the opportunity to take a look in regards to what is what we're seeing, is that kind of emerging commercial corridor and classifying it in appropriate way for further compliance with our ordinances. The way that we're structured in regards to our future land use and also suggestive zoning ordinance districts, there is the effort in regards to creating much more a mix of uses. Unfortunately, our ordinance and those definitions of those zoning districts are totally in compliance, which we'll get to in the future in regards updating our zoning ordinance and also our master plan. And I think what's equally important is when you start taking a look at our report that was given to you, plus also the presentation here tonight, that was also included in your packet, when we start taking a look at zoning map amendments, there's criterias that have to be met. And those criterias are definitely described in the zoning ordinance that allows us to say, and in the word as it complies, that it is consistent with the city's goals and policies of our city's master plan. It's compatible with similar uses that are found within that C3 zoning ordinance that we're suggesting. We also take a look at and work with DPW as relates to the capacity of utilities and services to accommodate this future development along Walton Boulevard and associated areas of development within that corridor, to ensure that there is no health and safety issues as it relates to that proposed rezoning. Also, we take a look in regards to the capacity of the street system in regards to traffic volumes and accidents, and taking a look in regards to driveways, and try to make sure that this proposed use or rezoning would not complicate further problems in regards to traffic along that corridor. And a few other things we definitely take a look at is, we also spend some time in regards of understanding the, if you start taking, oh, let me just back. Oh, shoot. Doesn't matter. I'll get on. It also is important to take a look at the boundaries of the site that's proposed. Obviously, there's vacant property. That is where they're proposing additional development is sufficient to meet that obligation. When we start taking a look in regards, is it appropriate for us to take that R3 zoning district and say that mini warehousing is an appropriate use in that? I would say no. It's appropriate to rezone it versus amending our zoning ordinance to allow, to allow mini warehousing to be located within that R3 zoning districts. And lastly, it does not, that rezoning to C3 does not create any incompatible zone within the Walton Boulevard corridor. The applicant's consultant team is here if you have any particular questions for them, or I can answer myself. Thank you.
Thank you. Those that wish to have the floor? Councilman Nicholson.
I'm thinking back to when the Water Resource Commissioner was here and they talked a lot about natural drainage, looking as were expand the proposal, I mean, the future plan, right? And especially even if we just thought about it as being, instead of multifamily, more commercial.
Right.
Has that been, I mean, is that, is that something that we think about when we're rezoning things into, from one category to the next about, it just seems like we're going to, there's, that was all green, half of that, that, half of this parcel?
Correct. Let me just say that that was brought up at the planning commission with the consultant here, talking about various mechanisms in regards to water retention and also other types of mechanisms to not provide more impervious surface in a way that would not cause more further problems in regards of stormwater and the like. Also, I just want to make, the reason why that area has been vacant for a period of time, before the driving range was there, there was some industrial type of uses that caused the soil to be contaminated, allowing those, actually those existing and proposed self-storage units are actually, has like what they call floating types of foundations. So they're not actually going into the ground to disturbing anything from the contaminant standpoint. That's why it's been seen there vacant for a period of time.
Is that in, is that, so those, now I'm curious, those sorts of foundations, is that in lieu of remediation?
No, it's not in lieu of remediation. It's in lieu of not disturbing what is already down there to further exacerbate a certain century.
To the water table. Okay. And then it seems that Pontiac has become the new capital for mini storage. And I'm not jazzed about that.
Okay.
Personally. I, you know, I kind of disagree about mini storage being commercial. To me, it feels industrial, especially the type of building, the appeal, the neighboring facilities in most communities. But it seems that we're lining our commercial districts with mini storage, which, you know, every community needs a certain percentage of mini storage. And my question is, in considering types of businesses like this, right, like we have some industries or that we can, right, hospitals limit the number of beds. Is there any, I know when we had conversations in planning before about dollar stores, that this was brought up as unable to really regulate the type of industry, but certainly we can make decisions about zoning. So I wonder about that thought process and is mini storage, do we, do we recategorize that if we're, if we're as a community dissatisfied with the number of mini storage facilities?
I think in a couple of ways we could. I don't know if there's any type of hard data in regards to saying, you know, when you talk with obviously a owner and operator of those facilities, they come up with some great numbers in regards to saying, because of your population and what's needed, this is the amount of number of storage units you need. I would say that what we have done in regards to, obviously, the one you're probably very familiar with over there on West Huron, I think that location and this location, because it is, it's not right on both of the corridors, the West Huron and also on Walton, it does a pretty good job of being set back from those frontages. It does surprise, support it. I think because of the condition of maybe the configuration of the site, it would probably not lend itself to any further commercial development. So this could be a good alternative for those particular locations. And I hear what you're saying, and I think that's something that we could take a look at in the future in regards of zoning text amendments as we move forward.
Yeah, I think, you know, we can handle that when we get to site plan stuff, specific to this, this individual development. But I agree, I don't, I mean, it certainly is a commercial corridor, especially with the neighboring spaces. I don't disagree with the rezoning, but I don't...
Very good questions. Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilman James, then Parker, then Carrington.
Okay, I support the issue before the council, that it, I support it being changed to the C3 commercial corridor. I think that's what it is, and we're just kind of catching up with what we're already doing. I am concerned, though, about the contamination that you talked about. And I'd like for you to talk a little bit more about, you know, what kind of remediation, if any, that the owners are going to be required to do or the city is going to do. Can you talk a little bit more about that?
Actually, I probably refer to Scott. Yeah, please, join us. Scott is with a company called PEA Engineering.
Hi, everybody. Thanks again for having us. And I definitely wanted to say thank you to Vern for working with us on the deep dive that they, that they did into the history of the site. And we will certainly be working with city planning and engineering to obtain all those construction permits, building permits, and follow all the procedures that city and county that they require, especially for something like this. So at the planning commission, a couple of weeks ago, I'd say the, any previous uses prior to the driving range is kind of new to us, but we know that that ground had previously been mass graded and disturbed and stabilized for many years, so it was used as a driving range, and then it's been set vacant. But the proposed improvements will definitely minimize that earthwork, and we have no reason to believe that the contamination soils are going to be a problem with the, with the erosion control permit that we'll pull with the county, demolition permits, and anything else that the city would need.
And if I can elaborate a little bit further, because it's, a couple of things came to mind, is that back in 2000, when the zoning board of appeals was considering a use variance, there was a report that was done, a technical report, which is required. And they got, and all they said was that there appeared to be some contaminants on that site, and it wasn't really suitable for multiple-family development because of being on the residential side, which deputy mayor and I have been having quite a bit of conversations in regards of what's required as regards of remediation in regards to residential development. This is what you have to do versus something on the commercial side. You're basically capping it. You're not disturbing it. You're not fluctuating it. You're not transferring it. And so that is, you know, the requirements are still there in regards of what they have to do, but it's not causing any further problems. And we, from our standpoint, there's nothing more that, from our standpoint, regards our, any requirements of any remediation that we have to do on that particular site, from the city's perspective.
Councilman...
Does that answer your question?
Okay. Thank you. I have a couple of questions. If I'm not mistaken, this is expanding the existing storage that's right there, right?
Correct.
Which is right next to a school, a daycare? Have anyone did a traffic study? Has anyone taken into consideration the increase in noise and traffic and all of that that would be led to this expansion?
There was, there was no traffic study warranted, and a traffic study was not prepared.
We're increasing this storage, which is already crowded between the hours of 2:00 and 4:00 because of the school, which is already crowded because of all the other residential areas that's in that area. And so nobody thought that if I increase storage, it's going to increase traffic in that area at all?
And...
And is there, let me finish, but is there also going to be something put up in regards to the noise barrier, because if I'm not mistaken, there are apartments and houses in adjacent to this?
Correct. And in regards to traffic, I don't know what type of projected volumes in regards to how, when they are, you know, when they reach their peak hour versus business-wise versus others. We can probably provide, or the owner could probably provide some information with that before we, before you make a vote.
Okay. And in regards to the noise?
Noise wall in regards to warehousing within the C3 zoning district, there is screening and screen walls required. Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
President Protam Carrington?
Well, thank you, President McGinnis. Just one quick question. How big is the expansion? How many more units you're be, you bring into that site?
There's nine more buildings, which would, it's essentially the max build out. So I think that kind of speaks to the demand, the perceived demand by the property owner for that need. So there's nine total buildings, seven of them are the slim standard self-storage buildings, and two are conditioned buildings that have heating and cooling and offer a different type of storage. Yep, climate control. Thank you.
All right. Thank you.
Others that wish to have the floor? Want to share a planning commission that the questions, many of these questions that were before us tonight were also raised, and many of them were tackled head-on. This is in part catching up to many multiple zoning variances that were given over the last few decades by the city. So it's to the point that Mr. Gustafson made at the beginning, it's bringing back into alignment about sort of what has actually been happening, even if the zoning hasn't caught up with it, like we had with at Midway and Sanford. With a little caveat, but because those developments that Councilman Parker mentioned are facing Walton, this is essentially land that is locked out from the major thoroughfare. So the, there are sort of quite a limitations, not only with soil conditions, but also it's straight up on one side, you know, it's pretty boxed in in terms of what else would be possible. So the zoning, I think, makes a great deal of sense at that broad macro level, that we're not going to have multiple-family dwellings that would make sense there on many different levels. It's sort of, the door has been closed because of the decades of changes that were made to allow the additional commercial developments right on Walton Boulevard.
Well, you know, I...
Councilman James.
I've got one comment. I thought it was my district, but apparently it is Pastor Parker's district, but I have further down Walton Boulevard. And the comment that I have, I think it's more of a comment than a real concern, is that that little corridor there, there are a couple of those businesses that really struggle to survive there. And I'm kind of wondering what the plan is to do, maybe some creative landscaping and something there to kind of bring that corridor alive, because some of the businesses that are there struggle to be able to, you know, to really to keep the business going. So I think the whole corridor really needs to kind of think through some things to make that whole corridor a little more inviting and a little more attractive to the community. So just a thought.
No. It's a perfect thought. As we start taking a look at our master plan for, you know, and developing that, our corridors are particularly of importance and...
We want these businesses to be successful.
And it's also much just in regards to enhancement. I think what's more important is in regards to how we can facilitate other types of development...
Yes.
...by looking at what's adjacent to them in regards of maybe expanding the footprints of these certain sites in regards of from a future land use standpoint, that would encourage developers and other private property owners to say, okay, with this added type of opportunity here with additional development, because of what's behind it, we can maybe seek an opportunity for redevelopment opportunities. I agree.
I know with, his concerns about, Brett's concerns about, you know, are we over, you know, occupied with these kinds of buildings? Generally, they just kind of go in, throw the buildings up, and that's it.
True.
But, you know, we can be, think outside of the box in terms of the environment that those buildings are going into and trying to create some kind of aesthetic there in addition to just putting up your buildings, so.
Is there a, thank you, is there a motion to postpone for one week?
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved by Councilman Parker, seconded by Councilman Goodman, that we postpone this motion for one week. Any discussion on that postponement motion? Hearing no further...
this motion for one week. Any discussion on that postponement motion? Hearing no further discussion, roll call on postponement, Clerk Doyle.
Carrington?
Yes.
Goodman?
Yes.
James?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Nicholson?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Six J's, no names.
That motion carries. It'll be before us again at next week's council meeting. Gentlemen, thank you for your time and your presentation.
Thank you.
Is there a motion to adopt the resolution to approve the increase of the youth recreation manager's maximum annual salary for fiscal year 2021, '22, up to $65,000?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved by Councilman Goodman, seconded by Councilwoman James. That motion is before us. Mayor Administration, you have the floor?
Thank you, Mr. President. The current salary, the current budgeted salary for this fiscal year for the youth recreation manager position, which has been vacant, I think, for the entirety of this fiscal year, is $57,200. And like I said, that position's been vacant since before this fiscal year started back on July 1st. The salary for the assistant youth recreation manager position is just barely below that. It's $56,650. So it's only $550 separating the youth recreation manager position from the assistant youth recreation manager position. Our proposal is to increase that youth recreation manager position salary up to a maximum, and I want to emphasize up to a maximum, of $65,000. So it would allow for some bigger space between the youth recreation manager position and the assistant youth recreation manager position. The other principle I want to emphasize is that the youth recreation program is very important if it's going to be successful. And as we start putting in place the process to develop a proposed permanent, long-term youth recreation center, as we look to make proposals regarding long-term programming for the youth recreation program, it's very important that we have a capable person at the helm there. And increasing this maximum salary is designed to increase the probability that we're able to attract a really high-quality candidate to take the lead of this important initiative.
Any discussion? Hearing no discussion at this point, a motion to postpone for one week?
So moved.
Support.
It's been moved by Goodman, seconded by Carrington, that we postpone this motion for one week for further review and consideration. Any discussion on the motion to postpone?
Administration, is that problematic? I mean, we're coming up on camp season for parents. I know we've been doing what we can to make do with youth recreation, but for the sake of time or thoughtfulness, is this something that you would prefer we move forward with quicker?
This is time-sensitive in the broad sense for the reasons you mentioned, but certainly waiting one more week is not going to be problematic.
Is there something that's going to happen during that week? That's why I don't understand what the, I mean, are we waiting for more information or are we-
Not, not at all. As I was just about to say, waiting one more week is not going to be catastrophic, but we're certainly not waiting on anything from the executive branch's end. So it's really about the comfort level of council.
There's a motion to postpone. The motion and second are certainly able to withdraw, but not required to withdraw. You don't have to bend to the will of one councilman in his direction.
I mean, well, so amongst council, what is the opinion or belief?
You could vote.
Well, actually, you can call to vote.
Yeah. Or if we stop talking, then we vote on the postponement, and you can vote yea or nay, and then we-
Exactly.
Okay. Speaker's list is exhausted. We have a motion before us for postponement. If you'd like to vote on it tonight, vote no, meaning you don't want to postpone. And if you would like one more week for review or research or community feedback, then vote yes, postpone for one week. So roll call on that postponement, Clerk Doyle.
James?
No.
McGinnis?
No.
Nicholson?
No.
Parker?
No.
Carrington?
No.
Goodman?
No.
Hey, that motion carries. So we have the main motion before us. Any further discussion? Hearing no further, oh, Councilman James?
Just simply that this is welcomed. It's needed. This is one of the biggest concerns of our residents, that we get a youth recreation in place. And I agree completely with the mayor, that critical to that is we've got to get a person who will lead this objective. It's a main objective for this city. We've got to get a competent person in that role. And I don't see any reason for us to delay this.
Hearing no further discussion. Speaker's list exhausted. We now move in to roll call voting on adoption of the resolution to approve the increase in that youth recreation manager's maximum annual salary. Roll call, Clerk Doyle.
Goodman?
Yes.
James?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Nicholson?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Carrington?
Yes.
Six J's, no names.
That motion carries. We're now at public comment. President Protam Carrington, you have the floor.
Yes, thank you, President McGinnis. Quincy, Mrs. Quincy Stewart?
What has happened to Ukraine is evil, inhumane, and without regard for human life. Putin is a dictator and tyrant, no different than Mussolini. The fact that Trump admires him and tacitly supports his behavior in Ukraine is even more reprehensible, despicable, and outrageous. The death and devastation that has occurred in just 20 days are indicative of the grotesque absurdity that is colonialism. That said, America has invaded in similar fashion Grenada, Bolivia, the Virgin Islands, Liberia, Saudi Arabia, Kuwait, Somalia, Bosnia, the Congo, Albania, Afghanistan, Yemen, Uganda, Niger, Mali, and Iraq, to name a few, with countless lives lost. I find it a most glaring and profound contradiction that America suddenly becomes a harbinger of justice, world peace, and democracy, when it has committed unspeakable atrocities across the globe with arrogant impunity. The unwritten story of Ukraine is the maltreatment of Africans for years, and the present glaring discrimination of blacks while they too are trying to escape the Russian invasion. How many of them do you see on video on CNN, Fox, or CBS? Strangely, only white Ukrainians are pictured as refugees hurting and suffering, while just like here in America, Ukraine also has others who have become citizens, and regardless of pigmentation, are citizens as well. It was not lost on me that global white supremacy gets swallowed up when whites are suffering as they practice white supremacy while suffering. Moving on in my address this evening, I would like to mention that this year makes, marks the 54th anniversary of the signing of the Declaration of Independence of the Republic of New Africa. The provisional government of the Republic of New Africa advocates cooperative economics, love for black people, land reparations, and drafted the Constitution on March 31, 1968 in Detroit. During Black History Month, Brother Kenny mentioned Richard and Milton Henry of Pontiac, who were founding fathers of the republic. As a matter of fact, such innumerable black revolutionaries as Betty Shabazz, Queen Mother Moore, Herman Ferguson, and Robert Williams of the Pan-African Congress supported the republic, to just name a very few. Keep in mind that Pontiac has a rich history of activism. Pontiac was home to Milton Henry, who was a close confidant of Malcolm X, whom we all now seem to safely revere when he was, you know, now that he's dead and out of earshot in this mortal plane. I lift my fist and salute to all the freedom-finding ancestors who gave all, sacrificed all, and those who languished in prison, like Mumia Abu Jamal, and Jamil Abdul Al Amin, formerly H.R. Brown, and to freedom for all new Africans across the globe.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Chuck Johnson? And then on deck, Mr. Bill Maxine?
Thank you very much, and good evening, ladies and gentlemen, those of you here in the audience, and those of you at home watching by television. I want to thank the mayor for the clarity for item number two, because it was kind of hard for me to talk about it in the beginning. But anyways, I know that the council and the mayor, and some folk that came to the podium were so pleased and happy about how clean the snow was getting pushed out of the way, and the streets and everything was getting cleaned up, and the potholes getting patched, and so on and so forth. And I want to bring to the council and the mayor's attention, the person that was fully in charge of making that happen was a young man named Eric Brim. He's a local individual. He's been with the city for over 25 years. I wish I had a son like him when I retired, because he'd be in the demolition business. However, this person should certainly be considered, mayor, for this position. He's worked a number of years for the, I'm going to call it, chicken scratch. Now that the pot is going to be raised a little bit, I'm hopeful that he'll be able to feed from that increase in his young age. With that said, again, we were happy about how clean our snow and stuff was. He's the man that was in charge of that. He's a people person. He can handle his people as well, and he's been around that department downstairs for all the years that he's been here. I think, in conjunction with your thought, mayor, as related to the recreation manager, I think we should start looking at contract compliance. An individual who can be a liaison between this government and the contractors who would come to this city and vie for the work and so on and so forth, we can find a way through a contract compliance officer to make this kind of come to fruition and then be able to lobby local folk for that work. It won't be a Johnny come lately like it has been over the years. The next item on my thought this evening is a contract, mayor, that's with a individual or a company that looks at our demolition as it happens in our city. And I do have that information, and I'm hopeful that the administration and the council will look at trying to bring this contract back into the city, because from my perspective, it hasn't been, excuse me, hasn't been fulfilled according to the guidelines and the efforts that our previous governments tried to put together. With that, I'm all done. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Bill Maxine?
Good evening, Mr. and Mrs. Pontiac, community large, governance, and everyone listening. I have about 10 to 15 contractors listening, because I promised I would say certain things tonight, which are facts. Before I go there, contractors, understand that the mayor is working vigorously. We've had a meeting. We're going to have a district meeting. DPW is a cancer. Under past administration, over $20 million RFPs were sent out. 01.91 did not participate because of the process. The RFPs, there was no affirmative action, no equality. It has to be redirected. How many of you think our contractors lost their homes, lost their apartments, their parents they couldn't help? See, when you have $20 million-plus dollars coming out, and let me say to you, the same person in head of DPW have been there for four years. I talked with him, said, I can't find none. Do you remember three Saturdays ago, Tuesday, when they asked a contractor about who's participating with Pontiac? Nobody told me. Nobody told me is what he said. Not heard about the position, all the money and etc. Look, we got to clean that DPW up. It's got to be cleaned up. Counsel, do you know, what is your subject matter? Or do you know anything about contract compliance officers? Do you know anything about the process of RFPs? Let, I suggest that you really study that, because it's going over your head. The mayor knows, have another meeting with him. I am determined that history will not repeat itself. DPW has a counsel. And the young man that Mr. Johnson talked about, yes. I looked at his background, has over 27 years' experience. But you understand, the interim contractor, the interim head now comes here, sits, and leaves, and has no excuses. I was one of the contractors that was supposedly be notified with a snow removal. Never heard from him. I still emailed to the mayor and sitting under him, and he ignored me. Why? Because it's a culture in DPW. Do you understand? It's a white culture in DPW. Stop eliminating. I suggest you all, do all the studying you can. It will not repeat itself. Will not. I have a meeting coming up with the mayor, and one thing about it, he's working hard, he's working diligently, he's understand. But who you have in place now, hey, he was there four years, the ex-mayor was there, he was there when those contracts went out. I can't find Juan. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Ms. Marsha Easely? And on deck, Ms. Billy Swazer?
Good evening. I'm going to read what I have to say so I can get it in here. I was born and raised in Pontiac. I attended Franklin Elementary, Jefferson, Washington, and Lincoln Junior Highs, when those schools were all one grade, and graduated from Pontiac Central High School.
Yay!
Forever a chief. I attended Michigan State University, where I received my bachelor's degree in packaging engineering. Go Spartans. After graduating, I returned back to this area, and I now reside in Waterford, but I'm at the border, so I'm in the Pontiac School District. I'm employed at General Motors and have worked for 38 years as an electrician. I have two grown sons. My youngest son, Juan, is 31 and was diagnosed with autism at the age of two and a half. He attended Pontiac schools from age three to 26. He received a certificate of completion from Pontiac Northern and later at Kennedy Center. My son Juan, and after volunteering at many autism fundraising events in California, is the reason I started my own 501(c)(3) nonprofit organization called The Inspirational Spectrum Heroes. If you don't know anything about autism, it encompasses a range of behaviors from verbal to nonverbal, low function to high function, and Asperger's is also including the spectrum. Pontiac has a very large autism community. Because the sort of behaviors associated with autism, these individuals are often excluded from many social events and activities. As they get older, they don't receive or know about services that are available to them, which is why my organization was created. We are not the experts on autism, but we want to be the conduit to guide families and individuals living with autism to the right agencies, especially in the underserved areas. My organization hosted Pontiac's first ever autism walk in 2019. Even though I didn't know much about how to pull it off, it was a success, and I learned a lot from it. We all know what happened in 2020, and COVID was still a large in 2021, so now we are ready to host Pontiac's second annual walk for autism on May 14, 2022, at Wissner Stadium, from 11:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. This is a community event and fundraiser, because it has and always have, will give back to the community. The council presented me with a resolution in 2019 in support of the walk, and many council members came out to join in festivities, as well as the superintendent of the school board and many of its board members. I am here today asking for the support of the mayor and the council for the upcoming walk. If you have any questions or concern, please feel free to ask me. You can find me on Facebook as Marsha Easely, or visit my Inspirational Spectrum Heroes page and website. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Ms. Billy Swazer?
Could you repeat the- Her name, but not her.
Good evening. I'm Billy Swazer. I am the SEPA treasurer. SEPA is the City of Pontiac Retired Employees Association, and we have two of us trustees, or directors, Jim Mariani and myself, have requested another meeting with the SEPA Board of Directors. Retirees were gaining $400 a month, and some other retirees only get $8,000 a year. So we're asking and seeking to get the board of directors to change their mind, and for SEPA to allow us to get $400 a month. There's supposed to be a meeting between the City of Pontiac, the SEPA representatives, and others interested in this issue. So hopefully, there's, well, we'll be coming up here telling you. But for the City of Pontiac retirees, make sure you're paid up and current in your dues. Otherwise, you will not be allowed to attend the meeting. My phone number is 248-875-6091. Call me if you need to know what your due status is, because if you're not paid up and current, you will not be allowed in the meeting. The last meeting was a sham, but we have to keep fighting to see if- The last meeting was a sham, but we have to keep fighting to see if we can get what we want. There's only one way to go, and that's forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Swazer. I believe uh, the name is Carrie Jasper. I don't, please forgive me if I'm pronouncing her first name correctly. Is it Larry Jasper?
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you. Uh, Ms. Lisa Leonard? Leonard? Okay, thank you.
Good morning, good evening, everyone. I'm here on behalf of the retirees, uh, family members who um, were promised insurance on February second, and we didn't receive it. And another thing I wanna mention, that the retirees have never, ever had a raise since they've been retired. And I think that's pretty bad. My husband is a former fireman, and those two things affect us tremendously, and I would like you guys to address why we didn't get the insurance on the second, um, February sec, first, that like we were promised.
All right, thank, okay. Thank you.
And just for, Ms. Leonard, uh, we're required under public comment, it's the public's opportunity, so we won't engage or respond, but the Mayor does a very thorough job of trying to capture all the questions and address them as best as possible in our closing comments. Um, so it is, is not on deaf ears, but we intentionally are following our rules to allow the public comment to be the public's time.
Ms. Gloria Miller.
All right. Good evening again. I got several questions. Mayor and uh, Councilman Parker, got some calls in my district. Uh, before we brag on the snowing, I got some issues. Uh, Kettering Street, Kettering and Perry. I got some calls, they never come on that street when they plow. This street was never done. Uh, that's Kettering. MLK, Martin Luther King, right there by Rite Aid, when I was in office, we appropriated some money, actually it's supposed to be Am, uh, Amazon's fixing it. When I turn that curb there, there's this big piece of cement here every time I go home. Would you guys check into that and see why Amazon fixed that curb right there, that curbside right there by that restaurant? It's a big hump there, it really knocks people's cars out of line, and it's really dangerous. That's my second item. My third item is, I wanna address the, the, uh, the council, and don't take this as criticism. I'm just telling you, I'm speaking from a, a, my citizen, and I'm speaking from some of my constituents and friends and, because I've been here all my life. I have never seen a council conduct itself the way that you guys are doing it. Now, even before my council, the tenth council, you have a session for the people. The study sessions for the, uh, the audience. When you sit, when you vote, you eliminated us. You're not giving us a voice. You don't give us a chance. See, when I was in office, we, we had a study session week, and then we had a week of formal. That gives the constituents out there in TV land to address the issue. Like the issue with this uh, uh, multiple family dwelling. See, what I used to do is get on the street and go knock door to door because it's, everything's not gonna hit them. And you gotta find out what they think. It's, see, it doesn't matter what you think. You work for them, is what they think. And that's the problem that I see, I see myself from home, is that you're not including the, the, the citizens. You're running things just kumbaya with you guys. It's not about you. You gotta have, you gotta give people the sign of justice and stuff. Because once you do it, we can't go back and fix it because you're devoted on it. Everybody, yes, yes, yes. And maybe the constituents that you work for, maybe no, no, no. Uh, I, I just, I have to bring that up because it's, it's getting to be a problem, and you're gonna see people come down, just trying to warn you that it's coming. Uh, the forensic audit, I wanna get this out real quick. Mayor, if you're going to have the audit done by July, the budget is done, is due, all the department here had to start having everything out by next month, April, May. How are you going to do a budget and you don't know what you got? You haven't done an audit yet. That means that the budget's gonna roll over to the next fiscal year, because July first starts with the next fiscal year. That means that you won't know what we got, what we're... And I happen to know, see, as a councilperson, I know there's a deficit. And so how are you going to vote on it and giving people raises and stuff, and you don't even know what you got? Thank you.
Uh, thank you. President, uh, again, that concludes our public comment.
All right, we're now at closing comments. Mayor Grimal.
Thank you uh, very much, Mr. President. I wanna uh, begin with uh, some good news, which is uh, as the public is well aware and as council is well aware, we had a rash of shootings uh, last summer and into the fall and early winter, uh, including a number of drive-by shootings in the city. That, that obviously is not the good news. But the good news is that the Sheriff's Department, together with federal ATF agents, have made nineteen arrests of gang members from the R Block and H Block organizations here in the City of Pontiac. Uh, together with the Prosecutor's Office, they've announced those arrests. And let it be known that we are not going to tolerate gun violence in our community. Uh, gun violence puts in, thank you. Uh, gun violence endangers residents across this city. Uh, it's been endangering residents across this city for far too long. And drive-by shootings in particular endanger completely innocent bystanders who have no relation whatsoever to those perpetrating the gun violence. And uh, these arrests are just the beginning of the seriousness with which the council and this mayor take gun violence in this community. And we're going to continue to crack down on gun violence at every opportunity in partnership with the prosecutor, the Sheriff's Department, and federal agencies as appropriate. Uh, secondly, I wanna thank uh, Mr. Maxey for his advocacy on behalf of local contractors in our community. Uh, I really appreciated and, and enjoyed the meeting that he and I had a few weeks ago. And we are pushing for changes which are long overdue, and as Mr. Maxey relayed, uh, these problems have been going on for far too many years here. We wanna make sure that we're changing our contracting policies, not just in DPW, but especially in DPW, to make sure that more local contractors are getting work. So thank you, Mr. Maxey, for your advocacy. Uh, we take that seriously. I'm looking forward to our upcoming meeting uh, coming up in the near future as well. Uh, I also uh, wanna thank uh, Mr. Chuck Johnson for some of his suggestions this evening. We take those suggestions seriously, and I'll be following up with you, Mr. Johnson, uh, in that regard. Uh, and by the way, I wanna uh, thank both Mr. Johnson and Mr. Stewart uh, for their accolades for Eric Brim. It's not lost on me that uh, Eric has been instrumental in some of the good work that's been going on in the DPW department, including the improvements in snow plowing times, salting times, uh, and the relatively quick response in terms of patching potholes out there. Uh, and by the way, as you see potholes, uh, you know, these potholes obviously are the result of many years of neglect and underinvestment in our roads. Uh, and we wanna quickly patch as many potholes as possible, so as you see these potholes, if you see some that have not been patched, please let us know so we can dispatch crews to get those repaired in as timely a way as possible. Longer term, of course, those temporary patches are not nearly enough. We need to do more roadwork and we need to do it sooner. We've already, as I've mentioned at past council meetings, accelerated uh, two or three road projects, bringing those forward in time so that they're going to happen a year or two earlier than when they were scheduled. But it takes time to ramp up to do roadwork. You need to first do engineering work and design work, uh, the contracts, and then need to be let and bid on. And so there's a period of time of months, in some cases up to a year, that needs to happen before uh, any shovel can go in the ground. But we are working diligently to try to identify additional money for roadwork and trying to do actual repaving and reconstruction projects as uh, quickly as possible, rather than just relying on this temporary patching. I also want to, again, announce, as I've done in, in the past, that we have a couple of important town hall meetings coming up uh, tomorrow. Uh, these town hall meetings pertain to trying to make sure that we have a connector between the different portions of the Clinton River Trail. A number of communities have uh, established the Clinton River Trail along an old railway line. Here in Pontiac, that Clinton River Trail runs between the west uh, end of the city, uh, along the boundary of the city, uh, all the way to Bagley Street, but then it dead ends and doesn't pick up again until Updike on the Auburn Hills border on the east side of the city. That former railway line, you can still see where it ran, uh, but most of it is now held by private property owners because it was never acquired by the city uh, back in the early to mid nineties when the city had the opportunity to do so. Longer term, we'd like to try to acquire some of that right away, longer term, to try to reconnect that Clinton River Trail along that right away. Uh, but in the interim, we're working to try to have uh, pedestrian-friendly roadways uh, through the city to connect those two ends of the trail. Uh, and we have a, a tentative concept that, that goes along Pike Street through downtown Pontiac, uh, but we're still working out exactly where that Clinton River Trail connector will run and what the details around how it will be designed are, are going to look. And so we welcome your input tomorrow at these town hall meetings. Uh, one is from eleven AM to one PM during the day tomorrow, and that's right here in City Council Chambers on Wednesday, uh, March sixteenth. The other is also tomorrow, Wednesday, March sixteenth, in the evening from six PM to eight PM. In addition, there's an opportunity to participate, uh, and attend a walking tour, uh, along possible routes for this. That's tomorrow afternoon, uh, Wednesday, March sixteenth, from one thirty PM to three thirty PM, and people will be congregating right outside city chambers here if you're interested in participating in that tomorrow. Uh, lastly, I wanna emphasize that uh, we take the concerns of retirees very seriously. As Ms. Swazer mentioned, uh, the city will be sitting down with uh, the CIPRA plaintiffs, as well as GERS and VIVA members and representatives in the coming week to see if we can get some of these concerns addressed. And my understanding is that for most retirees uh, that uh, are entitled to health insurance under the settlement agreement that was agreed to three years ago between the city and CIPRA, that health insurance has been restored. Uh, now, there have been some people who, because of their particular circumstances, or if they worked at the hospital, uh, were not included in that settlement agreement. And so, Ms. Leonard, I wanna make sure that you and I talk after the council meeting so I can learn more about your particular situation and see if there's something we can do to address it. Uh, and that's all I have, council. Thank you for the opportunity to share those comments and that information.
Thank you, Mayor Grimal. Clark Doyle, you have the floor.
Thank you, uh, Mr. President. I would just like to thank the Mayor, the council, my fellow city employees and citizens who expressed their condolences, sent cards, flowers, or intended to viewing in the recent passing of my mother. Some of you know my mother has been battling with Alzheimer's disease for the last few years. Your expressions of kindness meant a lot to me and my family. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. We're now at council closing comments. District Two's Representative, Councilman Brett Nicholson.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you, Mayor and administration, for another week of transparency and responsiveness. Uh, want to let everyone know District Two's meeting is the fourth Monday of every month, uh, coming up at Goldner Walsh at seven PM. Goldner Walsh North Ryan Orchard Lake Road. Uh, please come, hear from me, hear from each other, um, hear from our, uh, our council district uh, chairs. Uh, and uh, there's a lot going on in our district for sure. Our city, um, our community projects have wrapped up. Uh, we are finishing that process where our feasibility meetings, we have so many impressive ideas, um, and some really unique things that we're gonna be doing in District Two, so I'm really excited about where we end up. The end of this month, we'll be completely done with those feasibility meetings and be able to start working on those projects. Um, I have less of a poker face than some of my colleagues, and um, I wanna address specifically um, former Councilwoman Miller's remarks. If there is any confusion about how we are going to complete a forensic audit during the budgeting process, I have invited you guys and every Pontiac resident, including herself, to the Finance Committee meeting, which has been open to the public every single month. We are the only ones that have been there. We talk about the audit every single time. We have chosen an auditor. That auditor is putting a, a contract together for us. It isn't a small feat to get that done. So I invite you to come to that meeting. Our Finance Committee meeting is the second Thursday of every month in Council Chambers, two PM. If you can't make it, call me. I'll give you an update. Uh, I'm, I'm, I'm available. Uh, the other piece about um, us just all voting yes. We are not, it's not because we all have had information or pre-conversations before this meeting, it's because we all are on the same page and we get along. Isn't that something? Isn't that something? You can shake your head, no, but I'm gonna keep telling you yes. And my vote yes is because I've already asked the questions. When something comes up on the agenda packet, I'm asking questions, asking, and I am, and the answer is yes. I'm gonna keep saying yes. I'm not scared, and I'll be here every week, and I'll keep saying yes. Thank you. Good evening.
Order! Order, ma'am, you, the public comment has the floor. At public comment, we intentionally do not interrupt. We would like the meeting to proceed with order.
No. Good night.
Order! We're at closing comments. Councilman Goodman, three minutes. District Three's representative.
I have no closing comments.
Councilwoman James, Kathleen James, District Four, closing comments.
Yes, uh, District Four will have, it's uh, our Zoom District Council meeting on Thursday, March the twenty-fourth at six PM. To participate, to get the Zoom link, please email me at kjames@poniac.mi.us, or you can call me at two four eight, four two five, four six six three, and give me your email address. Uh, we will be talking about making a decision about the projects that we're gonna do in District Four. We have twenty thousand dollars that we are going to be spending in our district, so we're gonna be making those decisions on, on Thursday, the twenty-fourth, and we'll also be talking about our spring cleanup activities as well. Uh, I also would like to mention something about the Oakland County Community Policing Class that I've been attending for the last six weeks or so. Uh, it's a great class. Uh, we're learning a lot about uh, commu, about policing, uh, what police uh, deal with and what the issues are in our community. And I was kinda glad that uh, our Mayor mentioned the, the recent activities that we have seen in regards to uh, the arrest uh, around drug and gang activity in our city. And that needs to be done. But we also need to address our data for this city. One of the things we've, we get in those community policing uh, meetings is that they show us the data for Pontiac. And as a quality engineer, or someone who spent my career, you know, looking at data, when I look at data, I'm, I'm thinking how I can use that data to make corrective action. Because that's why you have data, that you want to do something with your data. And it's, it's a, it's appalling to me that this data is out there, it's screaming that we need more mental health programs, we need to work on the issues that are causing this violence, the underlying things. You look at the number of assaults and all of the other things that we're dealing, I mean, we're, the numbers for Pontiac are just astronomical compared to neighboring cities. We need some mental health intervention in this city. We need programs. We need to ongoing, not when there's a murder and we jump up and have a town hall, and as a result of the town hall, guess what happens? Nothing. We've gotta stop that because we have serious issues in this city that it is going to take a serious commitment on the part of this city to address. It's not all about putting someone in jail. Okay? That's part of it, but that's not all of community policing. We need to begin to come together and address the data of, and, and... We need to begin to come together and address the data of what our data is showing and look for ways that we can make corrective action. So as we continue in on this program, I'm going to share more with you about that, but I would love to see a community policing commission, an ongoing group put in place in this city that's looking at the data and coming up with corrective actions for this community. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman William Parker Jr., District 5, your closing comments.
Thank you. First off, thank you, Ms. Miller, for your comments regarding the Kettering-Perry interconnect. Whenever it has snows, I have driven through most of the neighborhoods, and I share some of your concern that sometimes all of the streets don't get cleaned as they should. Certainly, we'll be investigating that. Want to remind everybody and thank everybody who attended our CDC meeting on last Thursday. We meet every second Thursday down in the Lions Den and City Hall from 6:00 to about 7:30 or 8:00 p.m. Would love to have you come, Councilwoman, because you have some wise information that you can share with us. Also, want to ask, remind everybody about the spring cleanup for District 4 and 5, I believe, which takes place on April 20. We're working out the details of that with the group that is sponsoring it, but I believe it's right now scheduled for April 20. That date might change based on some of the things that we're trying to, some of the detailed issues that we're trying to resolve in regards to that city cleanup process. And that completes my comments.
President Pro Tem William A. Carrington, District 6, your closing comment.
Thank you, President McGinnis. I'd just like to thank everyone for coming out tonight. I sincerely like to thank everybody for their public comment, agenda address. We definitely hear you. I just want to make sure that, like President McGinnis said, that we usually don't speak during public comment, but I definitely will continue not to go back and forth with anybody that's in our audience. I think that is not the correct way to run meetings. So for me, anybody can call me. I don't care what part of the city you're in. You can give me a call. I answer my phone 24 hours. I see those texts, I see those calls, and I pick it up. So I will not, as a council pro tem from 6th District, go back and forth with anybody in the audience. We didn't do it at the school district, and I definitely plan not to do it in a bigger venue as city councilperson here. So again, good night. Thank you.
All right. I want to acknowledge that President Pro Tem William A. Carrington has a birthday coming up. He's not a big birthday guy, but because tonight is more of a truncated meeting, since the state of the county address by the county executive is being given at M1 Concourse currently, we'll be making a bigger deal about that next week. But happy birthday to you, sir. Thank you to all the District 7 neighbors who came out for our east side community meeting. We meet the second Monday of every month, 7:00 p.m. at Prospect Missionary Baptist Church, 351 Prospect Street. We had over 20 folks last night. Great conversation, really diving deep, and I want to thank the community policing sergeant and deputy that were there to give some information right on the ground in terms of how we can continue cleaning up our neighborhood. Really, a lot of progress. I'm sure you've seen it in your part of town with the tagging and towing of abandoned vehicles. That's definitely welcomed, and we look forward to further results there. Accent Pontiac has their winter showcase. It's a free musical performance by the students that are in Accent Pontiac this Wednesday, the 16th, 5:30 p.m. at the Strand Theater. All Saints Episcopal Church, my church, has their spring rummage sale, great deals, great treasures at 171 West Pike Street. That's coming up for the spring, March 31 through April 2. And La Casa Amiga, located at 76 William Street in Pontiac, they're seeking item donations for their goodie bags, and it's for their event that'll be happening in the spring. But Casa Amiga in Pontiac celebra en nuestros niños para este evento. Estamos buscando diferentes artículos para bolsas de regalos. Agradecemos cualquier donación antes del 8 de abril. Las dos donaciones se reciben de lunes a viernes de 9 a 14. In La Casa Amiga, 76 William Street, Pontiac. And for more information, call (248) 209-608-221, or, how do I do that again? (248) 209-6084 is the number for more information. And then finally, for District 7, the cleanup on Earth Day will be at Murphy Park on Friday, April 22, Earth Day, from 11:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. With that, is there a motion to adjourn this evening's meeting?
So moved. Support.
It's been moved by Parker, seconded by Goodman, that we adjourn this evening. There is no discussion. Roll call, Clerk Doyle.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Nicholson?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Carrington?
Yes.
Goodman?
Yes.
James?
Yes.
Sixes, no nays?
We stand adjourned at 7:55 p.m.